I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Oshkosh Education, excuse me, Board of Education meeting for the Oshkosh Area School District for Wednesday, December 5th, 2018. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Here.
Eliason?
Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Hi.
Holmstead?
Here.
Here.
Peschel?
Here.
We have a four.
All right, very good. We have four students joining us today from Webster Stanley Elementary and we're delighted to have Juliana Lofton, Gabriella Lofton, Elizabeth Lofton, and Lilith Molinar. So if you ladies would please come forward and lead us in the pledge, we would be so happy to have you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is for Lilith. Thank you very much for helping us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. And Elizabeth. Elizabeth, thank you very much for coming. And Gabriella. Thank you for coming with your sister. Good luck to have you all. And you must be Juliana. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
I don't know what we can do after this. I think we'll hop this, well, maybe. We have a presentation of North High School coming up pretty close. So we thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay, but if you have other things to do tonight, like homework or play in the snow, we have to stay. So thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
And we also thank our interpreter here.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we'll go on to board and administrative reports. I had an opportunity last night to attend the concert, holiday concert for Lakeside School. The Alberta Kimball Auditorium seats approximately 1,400 people and I believe that there were about 1,000 members of the audience last night. It was really well attended and I just want to give a shout out to all of our K-12 music teachers who are busily preparing students for concerts this month along with their teachers and their principals and the parents, grandparents, friends who make up the audience for these children to perform to. It was really a special evening last night and I know this is repeated throughout the district in the many schools who use the auditorium this month as well as those who use other facilities in the district. So I just want to thank everyone involved with these holiday concerts that mean so much to the children and if you have a chance to attend any remaining concerts this month, please do so. I think you'll have a wonderful time. So moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Cartwright, it's your turn.
Wonderful. So tonight, we had the pleasure to have our student representatives, so if we're going to go ahead and start, without further ado, from Oshkosh North High School.
So we've had a lot of really great things happening in the last month at North High School. First, we had our Veterans Day ceremony, November 12th, and this was really well attended by students, veterans, and their families, and it was a really rewarding experience for everyone there. There were music performances and our guest speaker was Bren Nymke. The Madrigal Singers from Oshkosh North have started their performances this month. They do about 30 community Christmas performances and their big performance is this Saturday at 7:00 in the Masonic Temple downtown. North Band participated in the Holiday Parade and we really appreciated the hand warmers from Dr. Cartwright. It was very cold. For basketball, our girls' basketball has three teams this year, which is new. Participation is up and there's a doubleheader this Friday for basketball. Boys Swimming begins their FEA meets on Tuesday. Our wrestling team has over 30 wrestlers in it this year, including two females. And Ice Hawks, the hockey team from Oshkosh, won their first game. And Girls Hockey Warbirds has one player from North and they're doing really well also. Communities at North is working on spreading the word about the food drive in Oshkosh to help people out who might need more help this December to make their Christmas. North has been working on lowering their tardies with some incentives. One thing that we're doing right now is on random days, teachers pass out raffle tickets to students who are on time and they can get prizes. And we also have this bulletin board with the discipline facts about our school to help motivate us. And the dance team took third place in the hip-hop category at their competition last Saturday and I believe they were only a few points away from taking first, so that was really impressive. And they also perform at halftime for the basketball games for JV University. Coming up, the blood drive is December 7th. The Madrigal's performance is on Saturday. And Holiday Concerts Band is going to be December 18th at 7:30 at North. Choir, December 20th at 7:30 at West. And then the Holiday Collage Concerts will be December 21st throughout the morning at North. That's all. And at West this month, we've had a lot of exciting things going on. For sports, the wrestling team has been doing very good this year as their season is just beginning and similar to last year, they're hoping to get a lot of people to go to state. They had five boys go to state last year, so they're hoping to get even more this year. Like Emma Lyon said, we, the Warbirds and the hockey teams in general have been doing very well this year. They won their first game. And then basketball has been doing very well as well, considering the boys team lost so many players after this year. They've been winning all of their games and doing very well, along with the girls. Sports, here's just some pictures of both teams as they begin their season. And the dance team recently took third place in a competition as well recently that they held at West. Choir, the link in the top right is the Madrigal Performance on Fox 11 that they recently participated in. They're fortunately able to do this every single year and just kind of spread the holiday cheer for everyone and they've been going around the school and really getting everyone in the spirit. This is the band as they are trying to get everyone involved in everything and they're trying to show that, on the cause of doing band, everyone involved is doing a lot of other things and interacting a lot within the school. And then student recognition, the Oshkosh West Index website has a lot of student artwork up and if you guys would like to go and see, there's a lot more. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get everyone's pictures up here. We're really trying to incorporate a lot of different students and a lot of different drawings onto the website and just getting it out there and getting students recognized for what they do, so there's a lot of really cool ones up there. Other clubs, on the right, that is a cover of a book. It's not a club, it's an elective and as someone, I'm in it personally and I have to say, it's a great experience. It's run by Mr. Stelfug and it's a constitutional elective class and it's mostly just a group of students. We get together twice a month and we talk about the Constitution and just how it was created and we read this book while we discuss it and it's just a really interesting way of looking at the Constitution and really getting in-depth about it. Mock Trial, we fortunately have two teams this year, so we were able to really get involved and we're really trying to get more people into the club and into the idea of law and just seeing that it's not maybe as boring as some people may think it is and it really is quite interesting now that we have the case. And then on the bottom left, that is Wave Robotics. They are preparing for their competition this year. Last year, they fortunately made it all the way to internationals and were able to go to China, so it was definitely a great achievement and they definitely hope to get there again. Miscellaneous, the Blue Vibes Oshkosh West School Store is no longer Blue Vibes, it is now the Wildcat Warehouse as the students were able to vote on a new name and as the store is being rebranded and DECA is really focusing on trying to get new apparel and new, just a new brand for the store in general to try and change it up. Upcoming events, the basketball game, December 7th at 7:30 PM against Appleton West, the wrestling meet against Kimberly at 7:00 on the 6th, and then the winter play this year is going to be Comedy Murders of 1940 and it will be happening on January 25th through the 27th. Have a good one.
Thank you, ladies both, so much for your presentation. It's always so informative and we really enjoy watching the work of our students, so thank you for sharing that with us. Board, if you'll remember, previously, we had a wonderful presentation that happened over at the Howard from Oshkosh North High School with the freshman communities, freshmen from the Communities Project Program over there. And so we, you had asked and requested that they come and do an abbreviated presentation to the board, so they are here tonight to present some of their information to us, so I invite to the table for these two young men to please come on up and talk with us related to the Then and Now project.
Hi, guys. My name's Calder. I'm a sophomore at Oshkosh North High School.
Hi, I'm Kyler. I'm a freshman at Oshkosh North High School. We are both in the Communities Program.
So Communities is a, it's a project-based learning program that uses English, leadership, and social studies skills to interact with the community. Our first project of the year was the Then and Now piece, so this picture kind of sums up. So we had a, each person had their own building and we had to write a vignette, which is a non-informational text piece, and we also took pictures about our own building, then and now, and why it was, why it was kind of important then, why it was important now. So why do, why did we do this? We partnered with Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau and we helped them kind of up their website. So all our vignettes and our pictures, and we even wrote a Then and Now piece with our group, kind of talking about what we did, and that all got posted on their website at historicoshkosh.org. And it just kind of helps some senior people and anyone that really wants to read about more of Oshkosh and to get people more involved in our community and what each building really was then and why it's historic now. So how did we do this? So like I said, we upgraded their website and so what did we do? Like I said, we wrote a vignette, a non-informational text piece. We actually had it on Chromebooks. We had it on Chromebooks and people walked around and we read it to them or they read it themselves about our building. And a vignette for us wasn't really an informational piece, it was more of like a story, a very detailed story, and the Then and Now piece was more of an informational text about that.
Yeah, and I'll talk about what I did. So this is one of the 18 buildings that we did and I did the Orville Beach Memorial Manual Training School. And actually, how we got our sources was not like mostly from the internet. We maybe got a couple pieces from the internet, but they're mostly from interviews because we actually got to interview someone that's in here and we got to go here, interview them, learn a whole bunch about the building and significance of it then and significance of it now. And we also got a bunch of information from Mayor Cummings, Randy Domer, and we also went to the library to get information. And yeah, I also did a vignette on Orville Beach himself and it was about how he was a selfless person and as he said, it's a short descriptive essay. And that is actually posted on the new website that we helped Oshkosh Convention Visitors Bureau with. So we updated that, upgraded that website and I'll actually tell you about a little bit about this building. So the significance of it then, this building, was actually a tech school at the time and it taught many things like cooking, sewing, and it's actually near the City Hall, which is around here. So yeah. And now, the now significance of the building is actually that you can rent out cubicles to like grow your business or to further enhance it or even start a business. There's also a coffee shop and there's many apartment space in this building.
So yeah, like he was talking about, each person gets their own building to research and we're in groups of four and there's like about 100 kids and communities, so we had a lot of buildings to go through. I personally had Oshkosh Bagash and so his building was more historic now than it was then and Oshkosh Bagash now was historic then than it is now. And now it's the Winnebago County Health Department.
And we actually got to show off these pieces at the final event, which was at the Howard, and as you saw in the two previous pictures, see, at the Howard, we actually set these up around the whole area and Chromebooks in the middle to show off the website. So we got to talk about their building there and yeah.
Yeah, it was open to the public, so anyone could come in at this time and just ask a few questions about the buildings. Right now, we are doing, as you've heard, the food and toy drive, so it's gone around a few neighborhoods and there's two stops left on the 10th and 11th to collect toys, monetary donations, and non-perishable food items. And we kind of focused back on to the poverty, so we're kind of learning about more poverty and the Great Depression and how it kind of links to more of why we're doing the food and toy drives because as we research on like Alice reports and stuff, that one in every two homes is below the poverty line this Christmas, so it's kind of hard to meet those basic necessities for these people. And more of toys for teens and children because it helps develop motor sensory skills, kind of like if they use a toy and they drop it, they're kind of learning how gravity works and just more of the stuff that helps them develop their brain.
Any questions?
You said you worked in like groups of three?
Third.
So that like each group would have three different buildings? Did you get a sense of what the other groups are doing too?
Well, each, each group had one building. So I had a group of three other people and we all researched this together and learned about it.
Did you get a sense of what the other groups were doing too?
Yeah, so as we were presenting, we had time before people came in to kind of just go around and see what they're doing. And while we were doing this, we had to pick between which buildings we wanted and during this time, we researched a few other buildings that we wanted to before they were taken because we kind of had auctioned to see what building we'd take. So we had a little background about each of them, but we mainly focused on our own building and just kind of told a lot about what our building was then and what it is now.
What was the most popular building?
I can't say. I don't know.
I think mine was pretty good.
Good answer.
Everybody wanted the public library.
Grand Opera House, United Theater, some of them were popular.
Well, some of us were unable unfortunately to attend the presentation at the Howard and one of the reasons for inviting you here tonight is because this is such an excellent example of the many, many positive things going on in our school system and the ways in which students learn. And so that was our main reason for inviting you and to showcase this Communities Program at North High School, which has had such a positive impact on so many students as well as the community since its inception. And I know last year, one of your topics was the Holocaust, the Jewish Holocaust of the 1930s and 40s, and so to see you connecting with local buildings and so on is exciting and we'll look forward to whatever the big project is next fall. So we thank you for coming and we thank you for promoting the Toys for Tots. I had an opportunity this week to be interviewed by a young man from Communities who reminded me that it's not just tots and young people who need toys and have needs this Christmas, but high schoolers do as well. So if you need more information about that, you can contact North High School or contact the district office. I'm sure they would be happy to take your donations for our high schoolers as well as for our elementary and middle school students. So thank you for promoting, serving our community in this way. It's very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you wanted to, just donate to the, so if you wanted to donate instead of calling North High School, you could also do that too. But if you wanted to, you could go to your local fire station and donate because they're always accepting stuff there too. So just, just to know where to drop stuff off instead of calling them and getting all confused, like local fire station anytime. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I also want to thank your teacher who is here tonight, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're at this point in time ready to get to the superintendent's good news report and we have a lot of news to report out, even though it's only been a week, we have a lot of positive things to report out to you on. First, we're going to start with Carl Trigger Elementary School recently unveiled its new outdoor musical playground. It is so much fun. The school's been working hard to raise funds for over three years and the new outdoor instruments were installed in November. They've been, our students there have been creating music and having a lot of fun ever since then. Also, at Carl Trigger Elementary, Oshkosh Corporation's Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Team, otherwise known as our STEM team, recently collaborated with Carl Trigger Elementary on a 2018 cardboard challenge. Engineers from Oshkosh Corp. visited the school to teach students about the engineering process. Students then created their own solutions to problems and followed the engineering process to create prototypes out of cardboard. Former Green Bay Packer safety Leroy Butler recently visited Reed Elementary School to share his message against bullying. Butler spoke to students about overcoming obstacles, perseverance, and following dreams by working hard and staying in school. Congratulations to the Roosevelt Elementary Student Council. Students recently organized the food drive and collected, counted, and boxed over 230 South Park Middle School recently had a successful family literacy night. The evening included many fun literacy activities like book selfies, a book walk, QR code scavenger hunt, and a bookmark making. The event was a great way to get families into the building to promote literacy with the entire school community. Bless you. First graders at Washington Elementary School recently had the opportunity to incorporate technology into their math workplaces. Students learned how to use code and Go Mice to land on the sum that their two dice made. A few of our English speakers of other languages staff, along with three Oshkosh North High School students with refugee background, recently spoke at the World Relief Coming Home Event held in Appleton. The students shared their recent experiences fleeing the places they called home, adjusting to their new normal as teens in Oshkosh, and ways we can provide hope for their future. Our school communities are certainly diverse and as a district, we are committed to meeting the needs of all of our students. This opportunity demonstrated the incredible journeys our students have experienced and the unique perspectives they bring to our district and our community. Former Oshkosh Area School District Nate Elder recently came to speak to eighth grade students at Carl Trigger Middle School. Nate is currently an aerospace engineer at Bell Helicopter and spoke with students about his educational and professional journey. Our middle school technical education classes were recently given the chance to tour area manufacturing companies and write an essay based on what they learned from the experience. Abigail Versey was chosen to represent Perry Tipler Middle and the Outz Charter School and did an outstanding job presenting her essay at a recent Rotary Club luncheon. Great job, Abby. Earlier this year, we shared the exciting news that ARC Contracting had donated $13,000 to cover the cost of reduced-priced school meals for Oshkosh students. We are truly grateful for their generosity. Recently, representatives from ARC Contracting visit Oshkosh and the Wisconsin herd took time to serve lunch to students at Washington Elementary School. The opportunity helped them to see and experience the far-reaching impact of their donation and generosity. Lastly, I want to share a very important reminder to our families. Oshkosh families can still apply to receive pre or reduced-priced meals for the school year. To receive this benefit, families must complete an application annually. Please visit the OSAD website for more information. We are continuing to spotlight a few of our teachers and sharing their reflections on why they teach. The individuals on the screen remind us how impactful our teachers are. As we continue throughout the school year, we're reminded how grateful we are for the work that they contribute on a daily basis to benefit our students. As superintendent, I continue to remain committed to be present and engaged in our schools and throughout the Oshkosh community. On the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time this past week. And with that, without further ado, I'll turn this back over to Dr. Herzog. We do not have any district administrator supplemental reports for you this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any committee reports this evening? Well, the superintendent's report was just filled with so many positive things going on in our schools and the success of our students as a result of the leadership of our teachers and administrators. And so again, we have so much to be thankful for and so much to celebrate at these meetings. It's really a pleasure to learn about so much going on that's so good for our kids. That leads us into workshops where we're going to again, learn about things that are good for our students and that would be Ms. Conrad, leading a discussion on the district and school report cards.
Good evening and thank you for having me talking about district and school report cards. The last time we did a workshop, we talked about our data accountability and our statewide assessment results, which lead directly into our district and school report cards. If you recall from our last workshop, we talked about what are the components of the Wisconsin State Assessment System and these are the components that are reflected in our school and district report cards. Our school and district report cards were released earlier in November. And as we look at our school and district report cards, we know that this is a major metric or a key metric when it comes to priority areas one and priority areas five from our strategic plan. So before we dive into our school report cards, school and district report cards are comprised of four different areas: student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, and on-track post-secondary readiness. And underneath each of those, they tell you a little bit more about what's measured in each of those categories. School report cards have also been given out in the state of Wisconsin since the 2011 and '12 school year, so we have data over time and I'm going to share that as well. Within those priority area weightings, you can see what the standard of each, what percentage of each category and how it's weighted. So for a district, an elementary, and a middle school, student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, and on-track post-secondary readiness measures are weighted 25% each. And if you recall from the last time we've done a workshop, that the high school does not have any growth pieces because currently it is just the ACT assessment that is measured there. Coming up for next school year, for the 1819 school year, you're going to see the ACT Aspire added into that and so that means a growth score will then be available for high school.
It'll just be for sophomore to juniors though. There won't be a growth over the four years, right?
It will be, it will be a growth from eighth to ninth, ninth to tenth, and tenth to eleventh.
Oh, they can aspire. Oh, okay, sorry.
Yep, so they're going to choose Aspire, so this will be the first time and so we've had a little bit of preview of that data released to us just so we can see what some of our growth scores might look like as they start to work out what those formulas will be. So go ahead.
I'm sorry, okay, I know at the last meeting, we talked about how ACT Aspire, there's some students who might not take it as seriously. Are you planning on changing it in any way to try and maybe fix that so the data isn't thrown off?
So that is a, that is a great question and so just on, I believe it was Tuesday, I met with Mrs. Montour and Mrs. Last and we talked more about how can we either incentivize, motivate, or get our students to understand how important that ninth grade and 10th grade ACT Aspire is because for some students, it may not feel like, where is it going? What is it going to do? And so we're talking through what are, what are some strategies? So I would love to hear from both of you, the school board reps, of what would be, what would be an incentive or
Oh, they can aspire. Oh, okay, sorry.
Yep, so they're going to choose Aspire. So, this will be the first time, and so we've had a little bit of preview of that data released to us just so we can see what some of our growth scores might look like as they start to work out what those formulas will be.
All right.
So, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Okay, I know at the last meeting, we talked about how ACT Aspire, there's some students who might not take it as seriously. Are you planning on changing it in any way to try and maybe fix that so the data isn't thrown off?
So, that is a, that is a great question. And so, just on, I believe it was Tuesday, I met with Mrs. Montour and Mrs. Last, and we talked more about how can we either incentivize, motivate, or get our students to understand how important that ninth grade and 10th grade ACT Aspire is? Because for some students, it may not feel like, where is it going? What is it going to do? And so, we're talking through what are, what are some strategies? So, I would love to hear from both of you, the school board reps, of what would be, what would be an incentive or what would be some of those things that would get our ninth and 10th graders more motivated to, to take it seriously and to do their best? The last time, West and North High School did a survey of students, and I believe it was two years ago, 46% of students said that they, they did their best, and then there was other percentages that said, "I probably didn't do my best," or "I didn't try at all." So, we really need to get that percentage up higher. So, giving feedback to Ms. Montour or Mrs. Last would be great. So, for priority area weightings, this year is the first year that for elementary and for districts and for middle schools, the report cards have added a variable weighting factor. So, on the last slide, you could see that the standard weighting is 25% for each category. High schools are not weighted at all. But what they've done is that the state has said, you know what, depending on our students that are economically disadvantaged, because we know in standardized testing, that is a key variable that may indicate how a student does on the test, we are going to start to weight student achievement or student growth either less or more heavily, depending on the demographics of your district. And so, the higher the percent of economically disadvantaged students, the higher the percent of student growth is going to be weighted on the report card. So, for the Oshkosh Area School District, the actual weightings for the district report card are up here. And so, it's 20.9, 29.1, and then 25, 25. Only student growth and student achievement are weighted. When you look, go ahead.
How much do you think that played into our score going up this year?
A little bit, but not a, but not a lot.
Okay.
And, and the reason I'm seeing that is that if you look at it, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of mathematical difference between the 20 and the 29.1. It did play a little bit.
Sure.
But it wasn't, it wasn't significant for, for some schools that are, that are very high poverty. That, that did make a difference. But here, but here's the thing, is that for stu, for growth, growth is important. And so, depending on where a student starts, that growth is, is everything. And so, evening the playing field by adding that growth piece, it does help when it gives factors.
Okay.
Sure. So, for the Oshkosh Area School District, I am pleased to announce that this year is our first year that we exceed expectations, and so congratulations to all of our students and our staff within our district. The major factors that are related to this is, yes, growth absolutely does play into that, and it, and that was a category that was a little bit more heavily weighted for us as a district, and you can see points-wise. And just remember then, in each of these areas, when you start to look at that, the number out of 100, that is not a percentage, that is, that is points that are calculated to put together the, the formula for the overall score. So, it's really like an index factor. So, there's district growth, and another piece in there is our closing the gap scores. And so, those two are definitely highlights when it comes to our district report card, and those areas really pushed us into that exceeds expectation. Exceeds expectation. You have a full copy of the district report card within your board packet, and you also have a full copy of every single school's report card within your, within your packet. So, looking at our, our trends when it comes to our district report card overall score, you can see where we were at in 13-14. Remember in 2015, Governor Walker had the Paws Bill, and we did no report cards because there was fluctuation in, in what the state assessments were going to be. And then you can see our steady growth from 2016 to 2017 into this year, 2018. And as you've heard me discuss before in board workshops, we want that slow and steady growth because those, that type of growth is sustainable. We're often asked, "How are we doing compared to other districts?" And so, within your board packet and within this report, we look at Oshkosh comparables and comparables in different ways. The first set of data that we have up here is districts that are like size, so that are maybe, there's no district that's exactly our same size, but a little bit smaller, a little bit bigger. And so, these are the districts that we would consider to be like size. And here is where Oshkosh is with our district overall accountability score. Also important in this is seeing the, the district enrollment and also the percent of students classified as economically disadvantaged. That plays a role in this as well because that also tells you a little bit about the weighting that may have been placed on that district overall accountability score. Then this is a different look at the data, so if you take a look here, once again, these are like-sized school districts, and there, this is where Oshkosh is with like-sized school districts. The next set of comparables we're often asked about is our athletic conference. And so, these are the Division Ones, we're Division One, both high schools are Division One high schools. And so, this is our athletic conference and where we fall in our athletic conference, and this is where Oshkosh is. You'll notice that some of the school districts are, are not like-sized comparables, and some, and some are. The next area that we looked at is regionally. And we want to look where we are regionally because those are the, the school districts that actually touch our boundaries and that students would tend to either open enroll into Oshkosh or open enroll out of Oshkosh. And so, this is where Oshkosh is compared, compared regionally when you look at our scores.
Appleton's dropped significantly.
Um, yeah, they, Appleton has consistently met expectations. Their overall accountability score is down a little bit.
But they didn't used to be at the bottom of the curve.
And then, another area of comparable is CISA Six, and it was easier to talk about CISA Six, all the districts within CISA Six, because the chart wouldn't fit on a, on a screen, so it was easier to do a graph here. And so, this is where the Oshkosh Area School District is compared to the other school districts within CISA Six. We're often asked, when you start to look at CISA Six, CISA Six is a really high-performing area in the state of Wisconsin. And, and read, and so when you look at that, myself and Dr. Kim Brown, we are involved in a regional curriculum instruction and assessment group. And so, those, the districts that are up there, we collaborate with quite often. And so, when, when it's asked, you know, "What, what are other school districts that are on that right side of the graph are doing?", we're collaborating with those districts, and we are working closely with those curriculum directors. And, and we're often asked...
It's a tight grouping.
We, we...
It's like 70 to 90.
Correct.
For the entire CISA.
Correct. And so, if you look at that, you can also look, it's, we're performing well as a, as an overall region. And part of that is because we are collaborating and we are learning from each other, what are those effective practices and what are working for our students within this region? So, and so we're proud of our sister districts and, and those that are working with us as well. But when people ask, "What are, what are those districts doing?", we are working with them, and that we are using similar curriculums and similar strategies.
And there's no outlier.
No.
Not a single, like...
No.
Which is interesting.
Like we said, in this, the Fox Valley area is a really strong, strong region. So, this is a graph that I have used with the board and when talking about district and school report cards. And it's really looking at, what does, what does the impact of the overall accountability score, what's the relationship between the percent of economically disadvantaged students and their overall accountability score? And so, as we start to look at this, what we really want to be is that there, there really is a relationship between the percent economically disadvantaged and the overall accountability score. So, when we look at this, we want to be to the right of that line. Because that means that we're beating the odds, and that's where we want to be. And then when we graph this out, it's also then asking, what's going on, who are, who are the other districts around us that are, that are similar in size or similar to us, and what are they doing? And so, you may be asking, who's, who's that dot, let me go backwards here, who's that dot directly to the right of us? And that's Wausau. So, Wausau is very, they have, their economic, percent economically disadvantaged is a little bit higher, and they're, but they're right next to us, so that's the dot next door to the right of us. So, as you start to look at that, that's where you really want to be, asking the question, who's like us and what are they, what are they doing and what strategies are they using? So, broadening that out, then we take a look at every single school district in the state of Wisconsin and where, where is the Oshkosh Area School District? You may be going, "I don't know where they are on that plot." Well, there we are. We're right there. And so, once again, you can see from a state lens, we are also to, once again, to the right of that line. But as you start to look at that, you want to know, who are, who are these people in these areas? And you want to look at the districts that are in the right of that circle because you're saying they have similar demographics, how, you know, what, what is going on with that district? And then you also want to know, what, what are they doing up, what are they doing up there?
They're like 95% economically disadvantaged.
So, we, so we take a look at that. So, in the upper circle, that is Laff de Flambeau, and they have 517 students in their whole entire district. And so, their overall score was 73.6, and the percent economically disadvantaged is 95, 95.2%. So, we can, we can talk and have conversations with them, but when you start to look at that, that's, that's not really, that's not really like us, right? So, then you say, "All right, so who's, who's off to the, who's off to the right?" So, in the first areas that are off to the right of us, those are our CISA Six, just some of our CISA Six districts, sister districts. But in that circle is Cassville, which has 204 students total. Lake Geneva Joint School District One, that has 1,948 students. Arbor Vita Woodruff, 533. Chedek Wirehauser, 933, and North Lakeland, 151.
So, we have to divide our school district up.
Yeah. Right. So, when, when you take a look at this, but this, but those are really important things because remember that data is just a flashlight that points you into asking more, more questions, that points you in a direction, and those are the things that you want to, those are the questions that you're going to ask. So, overall, once again, we're to the right of that line as a school district, and we're, and we're exceeding those expectations. So, transitioning into, how did our schools do? So, first up, we have our two high schools, and both of our high schools meet expectations. One thing I want to say about high school report cards is when we go to our regional meetings, one thing that we're talking about is our large high schools are all, the majority of them are clustered, and that meets expectation category because, once again, the main measure is the ACT. And moving data points on the ACT is hard. And so, that being a nationally-normed assessment. So, when you look at West High School, they, they meet expectations, and they're in the same category. However, they went from 63.3 to 68.3 points, so they went up in points. They may not have gone up in a category, but they're moving. And North High School went up a category, so congratulations, North. And they went from 60.4 up to 67.4. And so, and also remember that there's no weight, high schools didn't get any weighting. So, and that really has to do with North High School really rocked the closing the gaps. So, good for them. So, middle schools, we have, actually, we have five middle schools, but really six because Alps is, Alps is a charter school. And so, every single one of our middle schools met exceeds or significantly exceeds expectations, and every one of our middle schools are within the same category and may have gone up or down in slight points, but they're all about in the same range as they were last year. Even, even with our, even with our weightings, they're, they're essentially the same. As we go into our middle schools, we have 14, or excuse me, 14 elementary schools, and starting with our elementary schools here, both Washington L. and Merrill L. are in the same category they were in last year. Washington went up a little bit. Merrill is about, is about the same, but both of them have, have plans in place that are assisting and helping with students. So, one thing the board approved at the last meeting was additional, the additional special education teacher at Merrill Elementary School, which is part of our intervention plans for Merrill L. And you can see, then we have Reed Elementary, which went up a category with exceeds expectations. And then, coming into our next seven elementary schools, E. Cook went up a category to exceeds expectations, and Lakeside Elementary went up a category to exceeds expectations. So, we have some, we have some great work going on in the Oshkosh Area School District.
And Smith is, it significantly exceeds and may have a higher, higher portion of economically disadvantaged.
Yes.
So, that's really, really significant.
Yes. So, so last year, both Smith and Jefferson were marked as they, they had some dramatic jumps within their school report card, and they, we were given the little asterisks to say, "You know, this might, just be cautious with this." And both, and both schools have maintained. Their growth scores are really what put them, put them over in each of them. So, a big congratulations to both Jefferson and Smith Elementary School. So, putting it all together, here's where we're really looking at this. We had five schools that went up a category, which is awesome. We had no schools that went down a category, which is great. And we have four schools that significantly exceed, and you can see the percentages with, within there. So, so taking a look at that, we have a lot to be proud of in the Oshkosh Area School District as we take a look at this. But as always, we have some cautions and we have some conclusions, though.
Julie's asked.
So, yeah, cautions and conclusions. So, first off, standardized testing, remember, it is one measure on one day, even though there's multiple testing days, it's still, it's one measure, and, and every child, a child is more than a number, and you've heard me say that many times. But also, standardized state testing data is lagging indicators. And as I've talked with the board before at Education Committee and other areas, we're, we're never surprised at, at how our school report cards or how our data's coming out because we're monitoring and we're taking a look at the data at regular intervals throughout the school year. Remember that these are moving targets, and so as the state talks about school report cards, closing gaps are dependent on the overall performance of the state. And so, if the state is improving and we're improving at the same rate, our gap doesn't close. So, it's, it's really, remember, this is a moving, it's a moving target when we're doing this. Each student at a grade level and a minimum one year's growth is what we're shooting for. Everybody grows. We're talking about every student grows, every teacher and professional, and if our adults are growing in our building, we're going to meet our goals, and we are going to continue to have great success. And then, we're more than just a number in a rating, even though we do have some things to be proud of this year. But our continuation and the things that we're working on is we can continue with our schools and all of our school improvement planning, and when we set school goals, we're focusing on growth because that's where we're going. Growth will bring the attainment, and we're going to continue on working on closing gaps with a focus on equity. And so, our equity work that is, that is coming is, is really going to help with the closing the gaps piece. And you'll be hearing more about our equity work coming up in the next few months and over the next year. So, in conclusion, we know that it takes all of us to ensure that all students are college, career, and community-ready. That means all of our staff, that means our families as a community, it's going, it's going to take all of us to, to do this. And the OSD, we're delivering on that promise. We know that the longer students are with us, they're doing, they're performing better, and they're, we're overcoming challenges, and it's due to the devotion of our Oshkosh Area School District staff. I mean, they are amazing, and I can't thank our teachers enough for all they do every day. At times, it seems like, and I think for students, like, you're in the grind every single day, and you're, and you know you're, like, working hard, and sometimes you have to take a step back and you have to look and see how far you've come in, in making that. And thanking our teachers, thanking our students for all their hard work is, is one of those ways we can look back and see where we've come from. So, questions?
Any comments or questions from Ms. Conrad?
Great report.
Thank you. This is a fun report. This was a good report to do. I will be at the Education Committee of the Board tomorrow, so if you think of any other questions or want to dive deeper into any of these areas, we are, we have that on the agenda to discuss if you'd like.
I just, I just want to make one comment. I had a statistics professor many years ago who would walk on a stage with what we called, called moon boots at that time, and that was very distracting for some of us to concentrate on and take notes and, you know, be our best. But on the other hand, one of the things that did stick with me besides his moon boots was the fact that he told us that all numbers are interesting, and they are. All numbers are interesting. But they all have a context, and he also explained that to us, which also made sense to me. So, the context that you've provided in terms of comparisons with other districts, comparisons of like-sized districts, athletic districts within, within which our students perform, and then overlaying that, so to speak, with the percent of free and reduced lunch, I found to be very significant. So, I found those numbers especially interesting tonight because of the context in which they were presented. But a number in and of itself, 141, well, what does that mean?
Right.
Or 72.9, what does that mean? What's, what's the context? But the context within which you presented these numbers, I found to be very relevant and very significant in terms of trying to understand the data and, and giving me a better perspective on the growth that... a better perspective on the growth that has occurred and the success of our students and the, the staff behind them, um, in terms of where they are. So thank you for that.
It's exciting. Way to go.
Are you cold?
No, I'm stretching, sorry. So.
Great. All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share and talk about communication. Just a, a quick overview, the purpose of this workshop is to present the communication plan for the district. Um, it's outlined in the strategic plan, priority area two, as an action item for you all to approve. Um, so that's what we'll go through at this, at this time. Um, just at a high level, uh, what it's important to understand of what is the intent of this communication plan? It's really meant to be a guide for the district's communication, marketing and branding initiatives for the two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty school years. Um, really meant to help guide us to ensure that we're staying on track with our strategic plan goals and then also that we're staying on track with how we want this communication function to evolve and develop in the district. Um, one thing to note, as I developed this plan, I focused on the two thousand and eighteen and twenty school year, uh, because I realized that communication is not going to happen overnight. Um, so giving, uh, the plan a little more time to come to fruition was helpful. Also understanding that a lot of the tactics and the strategies that are outlined in this build upon one another. So, um, a lot of it needs, we need to see some progress before we can continue to move it forward. The other things to note on this is I did provide a couple of resources, all available in the board packet. Uh, the first is the actual communication plan itself. Um, it's an eight-page document that details the communication goals and, and we'll go through it at a high level, um, in this presentation, but certainly if you want to delve deeper into anything, feel free to stop me or we can also have a discussion at, at the end of this. Also linked to the strategic, to strategic plan, again, just stating because this is where it all stems from, in improving district communication. And then also provided a link, um, to the communication audit that was done in two thousand and sixteen. Last time I provided an update to this group, it was kind of a conversation piece, um, that I think is helpful. And then also helpful to understand that that audit and the feedback that we received from our stakeholders really was the driving force behind the content in this plan. It wasn't just picking out some communication ideas out of, out of the air. It's how do we bring this back to what we heard from our community and what our strategic plan outlines? So taking a look at how the communication plan is broken out, it identifies first five, um, key communication goals. Um, and I'll go through each of those in depth. Um, it's important to understand that each of these goals has a variety of strategies, um, tied to it. And each strategy has numerous tactics that I've identified to help us move those forward and ultimately successfully complete each of these goals. So jumping into it, uh, the first goal that I've identified is developing a communication infrastructure. This is focused on our internal and our external communications. Um, so first up there is continuing to enhance the OSAD website. Um, this is obviously a priority for the district. It was in our strategic plan, but more, more importantly, we're, we're continuing to hear that this is needed in our community. Um, we're continuing to work towards it. Um, you may remember, uh, this past month, we conducted a website survey and we had over eight hundred responses, which is a tremendous amount of feedback that we'll be sharing, um, with our executive team and the greater community, um, once we have the time to digest, digest all of that information. Um, and that'll, that's really meant to help us determine how is the website serving currently? And then outline what is our potential next evolution and next steps? Additionally, um, work is ongoing to transition the district's, um, school calendars to a different platform that's easier to navigate, more comprehensive for fine arts and athletics and things like that. And again, we'll be rolling that out in the next, um, ideally a couple of, of weeks or months if, if all's working smoothly with our vendor. Um, another strategy outlined is, um, just continuing to establish those communication feedback loops. Um, it's as simple as, you know, when they're on our website, do they know how to get ahold of us? Um, is it a quick response? Um, how, when they're in their school websites or even in their school buildings, do they know what that communication feedback loop is? And then also making sure that we're always have our ears sort of out and listening to, um, the conversations that are happening. Um, next is developing and implementing a social media strategy. This has a couple of different layers. First focusing on what our schools are doing, understanding that social media presence for each of our schools is different based on what their community needs. Um, but how do we bring that to an understanding and also to a district level so that we're sharing all of, all of the things that need to be shared with our community and celebrating our successes? Another strategy is improving, um, parent use and understanding of Infinite Campus and Canvas. And we've had conversations around these, but it's really developing those resources so folks can go to our website or get resource from their school that helps them clearly understand what those services are used for, as well as the expectations of what they can expect our schools to be communicating with them, how often, and just sort of that cadence of communication. Developing and sharing key messages at key times. This is really taking a look at any time that we're having a district-wide meeting or even a building-level meeting, how, what are we walking away from that meeting with action items to ensure that everybody's on the same page and that the information is appropriate, appropriately distributed? Developing more district communication channels targeted towards parents and community members. It's taking a look at, um, going beyond our current email reliance, uh, taking a look at e-newsletters as well as in-home mailers so we can reach both our families as well as those that don't have a connection to the district. Um, reviewing and streamlining school newsletters. I say newsletters, but it's really taking a look at everything our schools are doing, understanding how often we're communicating with our families and instituting as many best practices as we can to ensure that it's making sense for the information that we're pushing out. And then also creating a communication marketing advisory group. Obviously, these are a lot of initiatives and tactics to be pushing forward, so how can we tap our community members to tell us how we're doing and do that on a regular Goal number two is develop and maintain positive collaborative relationships with all stakeholders to strengthen support for the district. Um, this is something that has been ongoing, uh, but it's really promoting our district progress, successes and needs. Um, we have a lot of success helping our schools and our school leaders get the information flowing. Um, a lot of great things are happening in their building, uh, but the more that I can know about it and district can know about it, the greater, uh, reach we can have with that information. Engaging the community in two-way communication. I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to get out in front of community members, hosting town halls when appropriate, providing opportunities for more face-to-face interaction so folks can ask questions and get to know the individuals, um, that are working in the district and, and working with their children. Um, and then establishing an external key communicators network. Um, this is really tapping on the shoulders of our engaged community members that want to tell the district news, but they need us to help them tell it. Um, so gathering them together and regularly providing them with information, you know, things like what, um, we talked about with the district, uh, report cards, sharing that in a consistent way so that it's not just us, it's all the different pockets in Oshkosh that are able to tell the district story.
Under two A, do we retain email addresses in contact with our retirees?
We do.
Yes.
Yep. And, um, actually that's something that I would filter into our next communication, um, with employee communication. Obviously, it's a subset of our employees, but it's how do we remain connected to them and continue to constantly have a tie to them?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, so goal number three is establishing that effective employee communication plan. Um, communicating with staff first and always, both at a school level and also a district level. Um, again, it's just always that best practice and it, it's not to say that our schools and the district isn't doing this, but it's how do we continue to prioritize it and implement those best practices? Um, the other ones, um, how do we continue to just provide our staff with more information so that they feel engaged? Staff e-newsletters, improving our staff portal, getting that information to them so the way that they really feel connected to the district. Building trust through relationship and respect, um, help, making sure that they know that, um, district leaders, um, anywhere from all levels are available to them, um, that we're committed to getting to know them and that we want, um, to hear from them. Um, that it's not just a, when we're in buildings, but that it's that sort of constant, um, relationship that we're building. Similarly, how do we position the district office as a staff service center? Um, there's a lot of great work happening in all of our buildings. Um, centralizing that obviously, um, is just, how do we get our hands around making sure that we're being the best, best customer service experts that we can for all of our audiences? Um, and then, um, also included in this is how do we help all of our employees be advocates for our communication function? Obviously, this is, this is asking of them, you know, asking them to share their good news, asking them to follow, um, district standards and branding to help us keep that consistency. So it's being in front of them on a regular basis so that it's a, a constant. Goal number four is achieving coordinated communication, both internally and externally regarding safety issues and crisis management. Um, this is really twofold. Uh, the first being, how do we help our families understand the priority that we give to safety? Um, helping them understand our practices so that they're confident in our expertise and the policies that we have in place. Um, and then also it's, it's managing those times where it is an emergency or crisis situation, working with our Epcat team to ensure that, that flow of communication is constant and it's also what our families need and want. And lastly, goal five is maintaining a proactive media relations program at all levels. Continuing to build relationships with our media, um, contacts that we've developed. Um, it's, you know, going out and regularly pitching story ideas when we have those great news or even when we have an update to share. Um, having built those relationships, it's much easier for me to be able to pick up a call, a phone and, and give a call to someone that I've already established a relationship with. Um, and then also finding ways to regularly invite the media into our schools to see for themselves the successes and the things that our students and our staff are doing. Really just supporting that relationship is making sure that we have a media library on our website so when we are pushing out information, it's easy for them to get to, uh, both for a, a timely news piece, but also maybe they're, if they're doing a story on our schools, that there's a fact sheet that they can know everything they need to know about a school to, to get it right. Um, and the more that we can help them do that. Um, and then another one is how can we take ownership of what's in the media? So developing, um, some letter to the editor or guest editorial pieces that allow us, um, really anyone from a district voice to be able to get in front, front and share district news. So another aspect in addition to the communication, um, goal, strategies and tactics is obviously a component of what resources will we need to move this forward? Um, obviously, these are just assumptions, but it's, um, just based off of if, if we are successfully wanting to grow our communication function, what does that look like? Um, so taking a look at our website needs will obviously be something that we'll be considering and exploring with vendor options. Um, printing and mailing budget, as we talk about wanting to expand the different communication channels that we're using, um, it's not something we do right now, so how do we do that in a mannerable way, um, while making sure that it's of value to those receiving it?
I just want to comment on the printing and mailing. Another way of enhancing that is through the, um, the Oshkosh Herald. I just happened to see the, the latest edition of that today and there were at least two articles related to the school district in there. That doesn't cost us anything.
No.
And that gets distributed, I believe, to about thirty thousand households. So, um, in addition to the printing and, well, it is a form of printing, but it doesn't, it's a zero cost.
Right.
For the district, other than someone's time to write the articles, but.
Sure. Absolutely. And that's, you know, that's the basis of how do we ensure that our media relationships are strong.
Very good.
So that they're constantly being there. Um, this aspect I really look to it is, you know, thinking along the lines of an annual report or a snapshot of, you know, taking what we heard tonight in district report cards and spotlighting that in a fashion that makes sense for stakeholders that aren't connected to the district, that they're not hearing this. Um, so it's how do we get in front of our messaging and help stakeholders know what they should be knowing, whether they are aware of it or not? Um, and then another element, uh, really very much in line with, again, extending our communication channels is what does video look like? Um, we've had a lot of success in previous video, uh, production that we've done. Uh, it's a matter of, um, determining if this is an in-house function or if we partner with a vendor just to help us make it a consistent function within the district. The next part of the communication is obviously how do we, communication plan is, how do we know that it's working? Um, so what I've done is just outlined some of the assessment and accountability reference points. Um, this is based off of industry best practice as well as suggestions that I've been able to garner from the National School Public Relations Association. Um, so as we continue to move the plan forward, this is what we'll be focusing on doing, um, benchmarking when we can, taking a look at focus groups, surveys, taking as much online data as we can to understand what are people looking at and what's attracting them to, uh, learn more about the district. And then obviously just, um, having conversations, um, having all the conversations that you have as you're out and about, um, just being able to relay that back and have a central, um, house of, of that information that we're gathering. Um, the other thing to note is progress is obviously, as I stated, um, it's, it's going to be, it's not going to happen overnight, um, but it's important to understand that this plan is meant to be fluid, meaning if our needs as a district change or if we're realizing that a strategy isn't necessarily, um, giving us the impact that we were hoping for, um, that's, that's the opportunity to make sure that we can revise and change it based on our needs. And then just to conclude with that, um, like I said, this is that plan. Um, again, if, if our needs as a district significantly change, um, it's something we'll be focusing on. But then also one of the things that is important for me, um, to be doing on a regular basis to make sure that this is successful is providing regular updates, uh, both to Superintendent Cartwright and our executive team and to the greater public and the board when appropriate to help you get a feel for what's working, um, what areas do we maybe need some more community supports or district support in? And then also sort of just have that reality check of this is what communication in our district looks like and where we can go. So that being said, um, I'll open up for conversations, but turn it over for Superintendent Cartwright if there's additional insight to provide.
I think this is a wonderful opportunity. Uh, I will duly note that it, for Ms. Neiman, it's been quite a pleasure working with her this past year. Obviously, from where I came from, uh, we're very close with the communications department. Um, and Katie, every time I've given, pointed to kind of in a different direction or said, have we thought about or anything to that effect, I just point her and then she goes and she, she comes up with how to do it, she implements, and then she does the follow-up as well. So I just wanted to do a public recognition to, um, Katie for that.
Thank you.
Because she's truly, um, been doing a very dynamite job with that.
Appreciate it.
And I do believe that, um, because as you've seen, we've done a lot of initiative, communication initiatives, um, and on this year, um, even with the branding, you know, with building community through education, where we, we put it up on all of our, our presentations, getting some of that consistency, um, so that we're, we're walking and talking similar messages. Um, just even like the board updates, you know, after each of our school, school board meetings, being able to come in and, um, you know, within a day or two, information, highlights from this meeting is being pushed out to our community at large. And our community is starting to pay attention to that, especially with our news outlets. Um, they're picking up on some of the stories and they're starting to push that out as well. So that's a positive thing. And so we've, um, Katie has worked diligently and will continue to work diligently on those partnerships and those natural opportunities. Um, so, and just being, as a part of the process of being a transparent, um, district and so that people know what's going on and we can have those, those honest conversations and share the wonderful work that our children are doing, our students, I should say, um, our, our teachers, our administrators and everyone else who supports our students as well. Because it takes a lot more than just those who work with our, our students in the classroom. And we recognize that as a district. And so highlighting it and having those opportunities are really important. In fact, we even had a wonderful meeting today, um, just talking with, uh, just, and again, it was just an initial conversation, um, but it was, uh, meeting with OCAT regarding, uh, televising some of our district non-athletic events. Sorry about that. But just wonderful opportunity, initial conversation. Um, but having someone like Katie in, in this role is going to be able to, she now knows some of the directions that we need to go into and how to develop that partnership that the district used to have, um, and to really take it to that next step. So, just want to, again, give a little bit of accolade to, to Katie and the team as well, because it's, we're all working together, um, in order to ensure that we are doing some, as I mentioned before, the branding of the district and really, um, and making sure that community understands the work of the district.
If I may, I would also like to compliment you, Katie. You've done such a great job. You've been here a year now, right?
Yep, just over a year.
And I can't believe, I don't know how we lived without you. So, thank you. You've done a great job. I feel like our social media presence is bigger. I feel like we're getting a lot of great coverage and thank you, thank you, thank you.
I appreciate it. Um, I think, you know, obviously, and, and I know you all know this, but it's, it's definitely working with all of the individuals in our schools, you know, it's, it's them sharing the information of, of what they're doing that.
And I can't believe, I don't know how we lived without you. So thank you. You've done a great job. I feel like our social media presence is bigger. I feel like we're getting a lot of great coverage, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
I appreciate it. I think, you know, obviously, and I know you all know this, but it's definitely working with all of the individuals in our schools, you know, it's them sharing the information of what they're doing that makes my job possible. So it's impressive, the willingness of our staff to be able to get behind this communication function and help us move it forward.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it seems to me that the website is going to be a big part of this, and it's been a concern of this board for quite a while about our website. I don't know where I'm going with this, but I think we need to talk about that at some point soon.
I certainly agree with you, Mr. Evans. If the amount of money that we devoted to the website is indicative of the quality of the website, or the ability of the website to do the things we want it to do, then perhaps we need to invest more resources into that in order to get what we want. You referenced the National School of Public Relations Association. There's a similar organization in Wisconsin. I don't know if you're aware of that
Yep, a member.
But I know that they recently met, and they passed out awards, or distributed awards. One of them went to the Burlington, Wisconsin, School District for their website. I recently had a chance to take a look at that. You can go to that website, and you can do exactly what I've been asking for for six years. You can find out today where is the concert for a particular school, what date, what time, what place, and you don't have to download something else in order to get that. It's a beautiful website. Another organization that received an award from them this fall was CISA 6 for their annual report. I distributed that to this board, and Whisperer, they call it Whisperer, recognized CISA 6 for the quality of that report. So I know there are models out there.
Absolutely.
And I think you've done a great job, especially in these last six months, with the addition of the summary of the board, board actions at our regular meetings with Dr. Cartwright and the executive team gathering stories, I shouldn't say stories, examples of what people are working on, just to inform the board. I think that's just so critical, and the rest of the staff. As I've been out in the community and part of different organizations, one of the things that I keep hearing is tell your story. And I think that that really has been enhanced over the last few months. We know that Dr. Brown, on top of her many other duties, attempted to tell the stories of the district for a long time, and we're appreciative of the work she had done. But I always feel when you hire somebody new, they build on the work of someone else
Absolutely.
And they attempt to take it to the next level. And so I think you've certainly done that, and under Dr. Cartwright's leadership, it's quite evident. I also believe that communication doesn't belong to one person. It belongs to everybody. And so it's the executive team, it's the schools giving Dr. Cartwright the information about what is going on in a positive way. It's the Skills USA group from Merrill coming and telling their story, or Wave Robotics. Those stories need to be told, and I think the more we can do that at board meetings and through print and other communication, social media, the more, the better, because the schools belong to the people, and the people should know what's going on and what their investment is doing for their children
Absolutely.
And their neighbors' children, and their grandchildren, everybody's children. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for your efforts. Did you want to talk further about the website, since it's part of this report? I think we're
I'm just looking at Burlington's now.
Okay.
You're right, it is a nice website.
And it says at the bottom, it's created by CMS for schools. So they put right on there who created it.
And I will say, maybe overspeaking, but I know an update will be coming from our team with collaborating with Dr. Gunlock on sort of moving that website team forward. An internal team has been meeting. It was the basis for the survey being created. And our next step is to gather a community committee to take a look at those survey results with us to identify, you know, make sure that what we're planning on, or whatever that next step is, makes sense for all stakeholders. So it is in the works, it's just a matter of kind of attaching a timetable to it.
Katie, who
Well, we're excited.
Who created our original one?
The original website?
Yeah.
Is a Google platform.
So who took, who designed it and took care of all of?
I don't know the specifics.
Is it done in-house?
Yeah.
I thought
Yeah, it was initially done. I don't know if there's
So we spent nothing?
It was virtually free. We did work with a company that now has worked in two other ones, and I can't think of the name, but we did hire somebody to do some of the interfacing.
Okay.
But yeah, that work is really Google's problem.
Yeah, so we were ready to put some resources behind this.
At this point, it is managed by each of our schools, managing, you know, individual Google documents. The framework itself doesn't change.
Okay. Historically speaking, there was a website that was in existence until about 2008, 2009, and then that was revised, and we lost that feature of being able to go to the website and with one or two clicks, being able to find out where the concert is tonight, or is there a concert tonight, or where's the athletic event tonight? And then that one, I believe, was replaced by this Google one, or there might have been one in between. So I don't know
Yeah, I think there were a couple iterations.
But there have been at least four over the last 10 or so years.
If I may as well. We are working towards this being, this school year project.
Good.
Direction has been given at this point in time, hence why we're having the committee meetings at this point in time, so that we can determine what are the elements that our community would desire from a website. Once we have conclusion regarding those elements at that point in time, we are going to be putting it out for a request for proposal, and then, or to see what the bids would come back as far as doing that, but having those elements as required features of a website going forward.
Okay. I'm really pleased to hear that 800 people provided feedback. I think that's a phenomenal
Yes.
Number. That is impressive.
Well, I pushed out my Facebook feed, that's
Appreciate it. That's right. Put us over the top. All right, any other questions or comments for Ms. Neiman?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests for future agenda items?
My website discussion fit in in the future. I think we need more information before we can actually put it on the agenda as a topic.
That's probably true.
Actually, I want that website.
What we can do is put it out, if it's appropriate, push it out a little bit
Oh, okay.
So once we have the community input prior to us going into the RFP process, just to report out to the board in order to inform you as to what those areas were that were highlighted and the elements that we would be looking towards, and to gather, to garnish your input from there as well. So a workshop, but it would be a couple months out.
Would they be coming to Facility and Finance at all for an update on what they're looking at before it comes?
Typically, yes.
Okay, then I'll make sure when that's on the agenda that I would invite, you know, that everybody would, you know, not all of us look at everybody else's agendas for their certain meetings or committee meetings, so I'd make sure that everybody knew about that one, that they want to come to that one.
Right.
Or maybe change of time, so it's a little bit easier for everybody to come to.
Right, and with that, with the goal, of course, coming back in a workshop session so the board as a whole can get input as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good. Any announcements? I do have one this evening. The topic of dyslexia has come up more than once in various committees in the district, and there was a committee formed at the state level. It was known as the Legislative Study Committee on the Identification and Management of Dyslexia. And on December 4th, which was yesterday, they reported out two recommendations that will be going to the state legislature for consideration. One will be for the DPI to hire a dyslexia specialist, and the other one is for the DPI to develop a guidebook for parents and teachers in terms of improving their ability to help these children succeed. So I just wanted to make that announcement because it's a critical topic that's come up more than once in our district. And when we talk about meeting the needs of all students and saying that all means all, that also includes this subgroup of students. So I think that's a positive step in moving forward to assist all of our students achieve success. Any other announcements? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Carolyn?
Hi.
Carolyn? Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner? Garner, aye. Prizog?
Aye.
Prizog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Seshel?
Aye.
Thank you very much, meeting adjourned.